How much money do you spend?
I was, oh, I just.
Now they pay for my gas, so. They pay for gas, so I just turn the receipts. If I want to, any vehicle I want to take, I can fill up.
I'm good.
Because.
Fill it up. Everybody's filling the car. Yeah, drive all weekend, come back all Sunday.
No, as long as I've got that. If I, if I have my phone with me, I am on the call. It's my email. We'll talk something like that.
Mr. Steve.
Once I found my guy.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Steve. Hey, Steve, who, who won the baby contest?
I have no idea. I forgot, I never. He was just right out those doors right there. She, uh. Jack had a question, Mark.
Yeah.
These are our new ones.
Oh, yeah, we're good.
So we got the old and then the new. We came in third for the scarecrow.
Thank you. I thought you were showing it to him.
Nope.
Yeah. Thank you.
I ordered those for.
Oh, Barrett, what about for Marissa? She's in, uh.
She's in.
Oh, she's in Disney World, right?
Oh, is she? Okay.
She's dressed up.
I wanted to. Yeah, because I put the dates.
Thank you.
Fresh out of the box.
What?
Yeah, long time.
Okay, you got to run the city.
No.
No.
I'm gonna go home. It rains Saturday. Sunday.
Yeah.
Yesterday. Pretty inches.
It's raining all out. How many miles you could run?
Two, four, just ten. I feel.
It was good.
This Saturday.
Running, we get tired.
Yeah.
Yeah, which happens.
And then the following Saturday after that, it's Corey Harvey down here at the. Golf course for his baseball team.
Very cool. Yes.
Corey Harley.
That's my cousin.
The one from Franken?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, what's he down here for?
He, uh, he, we, I clean off with him all the time.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, oh, yeah. Is, uh, that TV coaches, the Pendleton, Arabia, wherever it is, they have their golf outing next Saturday.
Oh, cool.
The twenty fourth, so.
He used to hit the ball in one way.
Oh, he's got, he's a.
Oh, yeah, he was a good baseball player.
So we, uh, me, Melissa, Callahan Wilson and Callahan's wife are gonna be on the team. Get a team in it, and we got a great, uh. Afterwards, there are a little benefit, they have a silent auction, and Monarch Beverage Delight, a whole bunch of stuff, so that's what I go get my coolers. Because nobody else wants to spend any money over there, because they're like, oh, my kids or my grandkids play on there, so I'm gonna get paid to go see all these places. By whatever I want. I love it. I called, I called the guy from Monarch and I said, hey, are you bringing a lot of stuff? He goes, I got two trailers.
She's working.
Yeah.
Dressed up.
She sent me a text a little bit ago, and I said, put your phone and Facebook down and spend time with your family. You're in Disney World.
Oh, but you guys are my family now.
There we go. She can hear everyone.
My mic's off, you can't hear me.
You just think we can't hear you.
We don't know. No, two days. People.
Right. Yeah.
We're pulling it out. Yeah. Let me get that.
Yeah. They started doing like. People outside taking.
We'll do that. Too late.
Yeah. Yeah.
Get that there.
Yeah.
It does.
Now, what he is, buggies.
Some what?
Buggies.
Okay, yeah.
That place is. Buggies. Crazy.
What, what is?
That's a truck stop. Well, it's, it's a, it's a non semi truck stop, but they have everything from deer stands to salt blocks to. It's Walmart on steroids.
Oh, orange stair.
It really is. It's crazy.
Well, like a hundred and forty seven gas pumps.
Yeah, it's, it's unbelievable. They do not allow semis in there to. Period. I mean, they designed it where.
There was no line.
You cannot get a semi in there whatsoever, and. It's, I mean, there were, their wages are unbelievable to hire. I mean, it's, it's crazy, and they're, they're starting to migrate north, because usually it was in Texas and Florida, Georgia, but. They're starting again, like the ones just south of Lexington, Kentucky, it's closest one here, but it's, that's pretty crazy.
I'm gonna go ahead and start the meeting, six o'clock. Special meeting, September twelfth, twenty twenty-two, Pennock Town Council. Have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Pleasure, nations.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who called, please?
Shane Davis here. Robert Jones.
I'm here.
Steve Danny here. Marissa Skaggs.
Here.
Jet Bad.
Here. And we do have more, we'll go right straight to new business. First thing on the agenda is a contract for financing new turnout gear, Republic First National Bank Chief, go ahead.
Yes, what this is, is this is a. A, basically a lease to purchase for new turnout gear going forward. Uh, the way that it's set up was that they offer a ten percent down, and then one year after the ten percent is received and the signing of the contract is when everything else is due, and that will push us in well beyond. Our first draw into twenty twenty-three of the fire territory to be able to fully fund the remaining ninety percent of that loan, which is roughly eighty thousand dollars. I can't see it up there on the screen, but I think it's like eighty seven hundred dollars is the first, is the ten percent, and I think the whole thing is like eighty seven thousand something, but. That will allow us to pay for it out of the capital expenditures after we get our first draw in July of twenty-three. Uh, going forward with all the new hires and stuff that we have. To purchase the turnout gear, to receive the turnout gear in, there's gonna be, I think, I've heard anywhere from three to ten percent increase in the price come October first. The manufacturers are basically increasing every, uh, pricing scheme that they have every quarter. That's what these Hoosier Fire and some of these other manufacturers are doing, so they're seeing a price increase, so what I would like to do is lock this in, the ten percent is actually coming from the equipment fund from Green Township. They have told me that they have a lot of money for that, and that's what it is, however, the town council here would have to sign that because in twenty-three. The Pendleton would be the provider unit for this, and that would have to come out of our budget as the provider unit for you guys, so that's what that was about. Any questions? Yes.
Well, I understand it's first payment due July tw- July first, twenty twenty-three.
Correct.
It's twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars.
Right, yeah, it's broken down into, into the increments for the payments and stuff.
And we have that in the budget.
That is correct.
Okay. It's all I want to know.
Yeah, we budgeted, we budgeted in there for that as part of the capital line items, uh, for the turnout gear, and I can't remember with the, with the taxes of what we get off of that in that first draw in twenty twenty-three and, and July, so, but yes, the money is in there.
And Chris, this is Marissa, obviously, so I'm not sitting in front of you. Question, does this, with Green Township paying for this, does it affect the operating fund that they are also going to be contributing to?
No. It is part, so what it, what the trustee has done, trustee Valentine has basically said, we have twenty-five thousand dollars to spend out of the equipment fund that he's willing to provide for the fire department. That is part of his money that he is paying for his contract.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna purchase it and with your guys' blessings, so that way I know that we can get it and go in forward.
How many sets of gear were that?
Twenty.
So I can decide that after people that.
We have to, yeah, so that's where the caveat to this goes into is because once you order, the order with the sizes have to be in before October first. Because you have to have the sizing in, it's part of the manufacturer's spec, because we don't want to put somebody in there that's really small or very large to be able to. Take the cost of the nomex away, so all sizing has to be in, and the order has to be submitted by October first, or if not, that price goes up. It'll be very challenging.
Is it small, medium, and large, extra large, or?
The majority of it's a, a kind of a standard type of thing, so that basically goes on your pant size and your waist size, and your jackets are kind of your arm links and stuff like that, so we have a pretty good idea. With all the applications that we've received on, uh, potentially who the hires are gonna be, but we won't know that until lateral transfers come in, so that's kind of. The issue that we're gonna run it up against is the timeframe.
So you have to have new turnout gear for.
We don't have to have new, but we have, we have turnout gear over there, it's already expired. So the current membership will be part of that replacement, but like, if, if a subject that's on the department currently has a set of gear that gets paid a full-time job offer, he doesn't get a new set of gear because his gear is good, but if we have somebody instead of gear that's. Up to its expiration date, then yeah, we're gonna replace that, so that's, we went through all of that. Quarter master system, Tyler Hubbell's in charge of all of our gear, so he's got a spreadsheet of who's up for gear with our current membership as well as the new membership, and hopefully we can kind of outfit some of these people. Um, because everybody that I've seen applications go through, I know them, and I know their sizes, and I think we've got plenty of gear over there to kind of piecemeal it together if we don't get them sized by October first.
Okay, one thing, you know, kind of money, guys, so my question, we've got three banks here in town, so we do this with a regular basis. Installment payments, everything, and this is Republic First National, Rochester is a reason for that.
That was the company, the company, Hoosier Fire deals directly with them, so all the invoices come from them, and then they pay Hoosier Fire direct. It was the company that does the lease agreements to purchase. Um, I don't know of any bank that would do a lease to purchase for turnout gear. Going forward, that was just, uh, what the company uses, there's other departments that use the same company. I know East Madison just purchased turnout gear from the same company that we're buying it from, Hoosier Fire, and they use the same lease to purchase program through this company up here.
So they're located close to the company you're buying from.
Yeah, they're out of Alprisa. Well, Hoosier Fire's got an office in Alprisa, as well as here in Midstate, which is in McWorzville.
So they have a working relationship.
Yeah, yeah, you can, you can buy fire trucks through this company and do those purchases from there, yeah.
Correct me, Karen, Willie, whoever, I thank all their, all we have to do, do we need to vote on this, or is this just?
Signature. We do need to vote to authorize, uh, you and Willie and Scott sign the documents to authorize the town to enter into this agreement, so yes, we, we will need a vote.
Chief, don't sign it?
No, we, uh.
It's a good deal.
Hell, yeah.
Smart.
Be a good idea that you'd be on there.
Any more questions? Uh, can I entertain a motion for this financing of the new turnout here? So move.
I'll second.
Thanks, guys. Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
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 All posts saying. Curated five zero, thank you.
Thank you all.
Resolution, twenty-two days, ten additional appropriations for fire department. Steve, I think I'll go with you first on, please.
Okay, um, in May of twenty twenty-one, uh, the town signed a contract with, um, Ingles, uh, to prove, which. The fire department would provide fire and ambulance, um, protection for the town of Ingles. At a rate of a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, breaking, broken down to fifteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars a month. For the first seven months of the calendar year of twenty twenty-two, that money went into the general fund unbeknownst to, um, the Fire Territory Board and, and, um, Fire Department. It was the understanding that that money would go, uh, into a separate fund for, uh, fire protection. Once finding that out. I spoke with legal counsel and, and came up with the, um. Restricted fund, which we passed, uh, last month, so that the future fifteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars would go into the restricted fund for the fire territory to help finance twenty twenty-three. What I'm requesting is that the first seven months that went into the general fund that was allocated for the fire protection of Ingles be, uh, moved from the general fund into the restricted fund. I spoke with, uh, Jeff on this a few times, and he said by, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, by setting up the restricted fund, we would be able to, if the board passes. Move that money from the general fund to, um, the restricted fund to help funding of the twenty twenty-three budget. Um, I know that's a lot of money, um, a hundred and ten thousand, six hundred dollars, but the hundred and ninety thousand, in my mind, you know, in the minds of some other people, shouldn't have went into the general fund, and that was a mistake that needs to be corrected, um, and that's why we're meeting tonight.
Comments? The, yeah, I would say on that, Steve, I think the, as I understand from, uh, corporate results, money goes in the general fund, whether they're misunderstanding or not or not, I don't know, but that's the way we operate. And as I understand, that money is spent for operations currently, we're paying, the town pays, pays bills for, for the fire department currently up. Up through the end of the year, since I understand that, that money is pretty much spent, goes in general fund, which is the miscellaneous revenue going into that, and which includes the money from Ingles and, and the casino and different sources of funds coming in, then you get the two tax draws in the spring and fall, but the money goes in the pot. And it's my understanding, the money, the money that's spent for operations for, you know, fire department and everything that the, uh, funds come out of the general fund for. So I hear what you're saying on that, but I think the, as I understand, it's really good, so correct me if I'm wrong, but the money is pretty much spent. No, Willie, you said the general fund is healthy, that's a good thing, but it's, uh, September, you still got, what, four months of the year to go, and what additional expenses that we may have, we don't necessarily know at this point, so I guess I'm a little uncomfortable with. You know, coming up with the hundred and ten thousand on, at this point, it seems premature to me, it seems like, you know, you don't need the money till January, when operations are, as I understand, you've got some ambulances money coming in, you've got some money from, uh, Green Township. Ball Creek and the, you know, for the, the possible money, for lack of better words, that you will have to operate on until you get the tax draw, which will probably be in July, so I think it is. And I, I understand the request you need from us to entertain, but we're still picking up the tab through the end of the year with firing everything else that we pay, so I guess. Only question of that for you, Willie or Karen, if I'm incorrect on that, or if, is my understanding that the, uh, funds are spent, uh, I guess I have reservations on. Coming up with a hundred and ten thousand at this point in time.
That money was used in the figures to fund the twenty twenty-two budget. Many thousands was put in this last revenue, which is where Ball Creek Township money went to, it's where Green Township money went to, and that is where it's at, and. You know, we increased the fire budget for this year, I'm not sure that we're still gonna have enough money in the fire budget to pay the rest of the wages for the rest of this year, so. That's what we did last year when we did additional preparation for fifty thousand was because there, they had an increase run with Ingles, and we really, I don't think we started billing Ingles and them until September of twenty twenty-one. So really, I think all we built this for much of twenty twenty-one, and then I used the money that was coming in for a fire contract as miscellaneous income. And I'm not, I'm not sure where the hundred and ninety thousand was going to be, I mean, you didn't really start the fire territory until March, when you, the, this year that you actually. Got your resolution and got everything together for with September or March, so I already used that money in to miscellaneous revenue, which I was told that's for.
Because I know when I submitted my budget on August twenty-third, the, the total budget did not have any Ingles money in it. Uh, I re, I increased the line item for salary compensation to one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and I have to go back and look at last year's budget from what I raised it from to the one hundred and fifty thousand. But if, if I put the hundred and ninety thousand dollars in there to be able to be used, then I'm still back to my twenty twenty, twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen budget without that hundred and ninety thousand dollars, and it was my understanding that. When Ingles wrote the check for the hundred and ninety thousand dollars, it was to be used for firing EMS funds, it was to go into a certain pot where if I needed to use it, I had the availability to use it, it was just gonna be sitting there kind of in the, in the. Because we know that the run increases, but. Even, you know, even going for the ambulance side, you know, it's, it was to be used for the ambulance side, and you were already under a contract with the town of Pendleton, so if anything needed to be done for the ambulance service, they would have to amend their contract that's currently under their. Operating until, I think the end of contract is twenty-three, uh, for that end of, uh, since December of twenty-three. No, December twenty-two, sorry. It was a four-year contract, so the hundred and ninety thousand dollars, if it was put in the budget, I didn't see any line item of a hundred and ninety thousand dollar increase in my budget after I submitted it on August twenty-third.
You wouldn't, if you don't get, you don't see, your revenue is not. Right there, it's in this. It's in this pot. This last revenue, which is the general fund, which is all of these, the, the casino. In twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, you're just the compensation for salary, which is ninety-one thousand, one hundred and, one hundred dollars. I printed all those off. They were the same for the last three years, and then last year we had up it. As, uh, salaries for thirty-eight thousand in salaries and three thousand seven hundred dollars in FICA, plus some travel expense, some repairs to the vehicle and clothing expense, and this was at the end of December. So within compensation, because you knew there was going to be a compensation because of the increase in Ingles, it went up to a hundred and fifty thousand from ninety-one thousand to a hundred and fifty. So yes, I did use part of the Ingles money contract, so you could have an increase in that, your FICA.
Your by me should stand. Correct me if I'm wrong, but. Contract money from Green Township, contract money from Ball Creek Township, what the town of Pendleton pays for the fire department and the town of Ingles, all is in a miscellaneous revenue. Item, line item that Karen's talking about. Also, that line item, that money is not only used for the fire department, it's used for the planning department, the police department. It's, it's really no different, except for the dollar value. The. Golf cart tax, fifty dollars till July first, then they go down to twenty-five, even that money is miscellaneous revenue, doesn't stand in place in the department, that goes to the miscellaneous revenue fund, which is the general fund. State Board of Accounts, according to the letter that everybody got, that Karen sent to us, and she explained what she thought was the right way, questioning. The, to the State Board of Accounts, and the State Board of Accounts basically says that money's gotta go into. Miscellaneous revenue.
Did you send that email to me? Because I don't.
Council members.
Okay.
I'm sorry, when the person asked me some questions.
I got a copyright.
Okay, yeah, cause I don't, I don't know what email was sent, so.
And by doing that, State Board of Accounting even said, how can you put money over there when they're really not? Fire territory.
But we're under contract by the town of Pendleton for the fire department, so it's not even for the fire territory yet.
It's still contracted money, they, it's no different than Green Township and Fall Creek Township. And that money's went there for years, the planning department, people thought I asked, why, why do we have? And and I had to ask, cause I didn't understand it, our general fund dollars is up, okay? All the permits that have been issued the last two years for these subdivisions. Is in that miscellaneous revenue, which takes our general fund up. Now, the last two months, the permits have went way down compared to where they've been because. Falls, the falls, Karen Glenn and Hunsinger have slowed down and filled up the different phases to rent. So not knowing how much money's gonna be coming in, it's an estimate, it's your budget, it's an estimate. And that miscellaneous revenue that's coming in, it's gonna be less this next year, is that a fair statement?
I, I think so.
Are you too? So to move money, we all approved the budget here. Week ago, two weeks ago, and in that, even though we we approved it, if there's a shortfall of two hundred thirteen thousand dollars. So we put this hundred ten thousand dollars, pulled that out, now we're three hundred and twenty thousand dollars in in. That we're short in a shortfall, which comes out of, it'll come out of the general fund or what's what's the other word?
It's still there.
Cash reserve.
Cash reserve.
Cash reserve, yeah, the cash reserve. So I. Listen, what's, or reading what State Board of Account says, I can't see us doing this, this is the right thing to do.
I have a legal question. So we have this contract with Ingles for fire and ambulance service. They pay us for that, correct? Now it goes in our general fund or miscellaneous income. Could they come back for us if we're not? To show, hey, what did you use that money for? Is there something legal? I don't know, I'm asking.
Contract requires the town to provide the services.
That's, that's the only thing legally that they're bound to.
That's, okay.
The question that I have is, I don't think there's any discrepancy, we all understand it's miscellaneous revenue, thereby it's in the general fund. However, what I'm trying to understand is the mechanism to fund these accounts that we have under. The general ledger or under miscellaneous revenue. I mean, we created this fund last month, I think, in the council meeting, and so I guess I'm questioning why we create a fund if we can't fund it. Because I think that that would have thrown up all kinds of red flags at that point, and the email that Karen's referencing. Todd, I believe it is from DLGF says, well, if the entity doesn't exist and the fund doesn't exist, then I don't know how you would transfer it. Well, the fund does exist. And I'm not saying that I'm a hundred percent comfortable with the financial situation we're in right now, I've yet to really dig into those numbers and understand where the town is at for the next quarter. But at the end of the day, we are the providing unit for the fire department or the fire territory, whichever one you wanna call it. And so we have a burden to explore our options and look at this seriously and provide the fire service that we agreed to provide. As part of this, and so I'm just kind of on a fact-finding mission right now, so I guess first question is. Is the fund that we created in August, is that applicable to what we're trying to do here by move funds from the general fund miscellaneous revenue to that? Or is it not?
Yeah.
It's, it's not exactly an apples that wills comparison on that, the fund is is good, it's created. And my understanding is the current payments are indeed going into that, is that correct? Or not? Okay. The. When the DLGF made their commentary, they were certainly correct, the fund didn't exist, nor did the. Nor did the fire territory, but now now that it does. And I've lost my track a little bit, but. The fund does exist, it will receive the monies intended for the fire territory going forward, and certainly in twenty twenty three. I. Chris, can you restate what you're looking for? I mean, the the fund, you can receive money into that new fund, that that is possible, that's legal.
Can I ask what the new fund is? That's the fire territory restricted fund that we created in July, actually, you know, the moment's up right now, Chris, you're on to you.
Um, the fire, I'm talking about the restricted fund that we created like thirty, sixty days ago is all I'm asking about. Like, we created a fund, can we fund it? Because Todd seemed to say that, no, we couldn't fund it. To me, that seems crazy that we would create a fund that we couldn't fund, that we couldn't put money in.
You couldn't move the money into this fund, from a legal standpoint, you can do this. The, 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 I think the question that's in front of the council today is, is it, is it the fiscal? Does the council desire to do that based on the fiscal position?
I think that's the other giant issue is trying to look at a financial model and saying, okay, we have a quarter of the year left. How close can we cut this? And still be comfortable and also provide the fire service that we are intending to provide as the providing unit. For the South Madison County Community Fire Department, Fire Territory, you know, we have to do this, and we have to have it roll out right, I feel like. But I can't roll it out right at the expense of the town, since the town is the one that's gonna bear the responsibility. If their individual finances go south, I feel like, and and I am not a financial person, it strikes fear in my husband and dad that I am involved in financial decisions at the minimum level. But that's how I feel personally, I don't know how the rest of the council feels.
A little bit on the genesis of this and what Steve says is is correct. When it was discovered that this money was being put into the general fund, and my understanding is, and I would ask Willie and Karen if I had this question about the money that's not direct. In, that's not directly placed into a fund or directed to a fund by terms of a contract or a fund, goes into the general. Everything goes into the general fund that comes in unless specifically direct otherwise by a resolution of this body or a contract or a state ball. So this might, once it was found out, Steve said, what can we do about this for the, for the future? And he talked to Paige, he talked to me, and I think Paige came up with one idea that would have worked, and the restricted fund is another idea that works, and you created that. For this purpose. Now it's sitting there, how do you wanna fund it, council? That 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 becomes the question in front of you. Somewhat today, it'll continue to be in front of this council going forward.
Okay, if, if that money's not the hundred ninety thousand dollars, move. Start in January one, Ingles is. Correct, Chief, if I'm wrong, Ingles is gonna pay a hundred nine thousand dollars for twenty twenty three. So. To fund what we're currently doing, the hundred ninety thousand one year. And let's say from September the twelfth to December thirty first, we're still gonna be covering cause they're paying. Correct?
Right, then I'm not receiving any of the assets from.
My point is, whether you get the fifteen thousand dollars a month, work, the town through the clerk's office is paying. For people at Ingles, because you got a contract, right?
After the first of the year, correct? Right now, no, all of our fire apparatus comes from this fire station. We do not.
We're not paying anybody.
I do not have any.
We're not paying anybody for fire or ambulance.
I do not have any fire people to respond to the Eagle Station, all of our members come to this station right here to respond to Ingles. I have an ambulance crew down there twenty-four seven.
That man the fire truck if they had to.
Ambulance only. And going forward, after the first of the year, that money was going to help offset that cost because we don't get a draw until July.
It's still will, January first.
I understand that, but then also, it was always my understanding too, is that this money was gonna be set aside for fire and EMS, because that's what the contract stated. That's what I, that's what I read into, now, that would have alluded me to not put in for a grant for a fire truck, because, you know. Potentially have to pay ten percent on this, so we're looking at seventy six thousand dollars, and we have to try to figure out if we get this grant for a fire truck. Which I know I've been awarded the first step in the process, that was gonna come out of that a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, or I would have applied for the the grant. Because I have to, I had to have a budget, while I'm looking at the hundred and ninety thousand dollars for fire NMS coverage. That hundred ninety thousand dollars, if we got that grant for the fire truck, then that money was actually gonna come out of that hundred and ninety thousand dollars to pay that ten percent for that fire truck that we're gonna buy. That we were working for the grant.
Okay, why, why don't? We look at. The same money from Green Township. Their, their. I think contract was for a hundred and five thousand.
And right now, I have no idea where that money's at, I don't see any income, and I don't see any of the income coming in, I just know when I submitted my budget. That was my expenditures, I don't have a clue of what money comes in other than the billing fund that I have set up already. And even that. You know, I I know I've sent out a lot of bills, but I don't know where we're at as far as following up or second bills or third bills to try to recoup some of this money. Per the state statute allows me to bill. So the hundred and ninety thousand dollars I was counting on to help pay for salaries going forward after January first.
But that was twenty twenty two money. That wasn't twenty twenty three money. So you want to take the twenty twenty two money that the town signed under contract with Ingles? And hold it and pay your guys next year, is that what you were going to do?
Yeah, because my my budget's already, my budget was already set in August.
That money was to the town to provide services, which we pay the firemen under runs.
Okay.
So it was paid, and it was, as far as I'm concerned, it was put in the right account.
But the, but my, my confusion is, and this is me being. I can say illiterate on this, is, is when I have, when I submitted my budget and it was approved, then that contract was signed, then that bunny from that contract is not in this budget.
Yeah, I never seen a contract that said the money was going directly to the park or the fire department. I've never seen a contract said that.
I'd have to look at the contract.
Not increase, if if we're short a month. On January first. Why didn't we agree to another contract with Ingles for the same amount of money as twenty twenty two? Which I don't know, any of us had, maybe Steve had him go on, did that twenty twenty three?
I'm not, I'm not following your question or your your comments on that.
We, what he's trying to say, we're providing more service in twenty three with ambulance and everything.
We provide more service, the same service for zero dollars.
But we're not getting any more money, I think it's because that's all they have, am I right?
I have no idea.
I think that's all they're appropriated, all they get for fire service, ambulance service.
Right.
Is a hundred ninety, so they're giving all of it to us, I guess.
That's not absolutely true.
Is it?
No, for, we det, we determined the hundred ninety would be sufficient due to the fact that they're. Going to be joining the fire territory in the twenty four, twenty five year before twenty twenty six, so. As them being a future partner in the fire territory, we felt it was appropriate to keep it at a hundred ninety thousand.
Because if, if, if we do, if we do the true math, what it costs to be a paramedic and an EMT. Their budget for fire protection is over probably four fifty, five hundred thousand dollars. So they're getting a pretty good break, and that's why when we discussed this, it was like, leave it a hundred ninety thousand dollars, cause really and truly. That money is just going to be sitting there in case we need it for emergency purchases, i.e. the fire truck grant if we get it. And going forward, if we needed something else to, as a big ticket item to pay for another set of turnout gear. For whatever those big capital expenditures until we get the money in July.
How long have we collected? Money, monthly payments from the town of Ingles?
I think since September twenty twenty one.
Okay, so that's correct. September twenty one, so for one year. We've collected money. And how did we get to that point in twenty twenty one? That's called, before we didn't charge anything.
Yeah, it was mutual aid.
That was, it was all free.
Yeah, right, so they had no initiative to fix anything, when I say fix anything. Try to get the volunteers or anything, there was too many times, Chief, that we talked where you would beat them there. And it's always the Pendleton guys, we're running the trucks up the highway to Ingles and then back. And it's a good move, what would, you know, what you've done, where we got a truck down there, it's a great move. But at least that hundred ninety thousand dollars isn't coming out of Pendleton money. Just for the fire department. A hundred ninety thousand that we've never gotten before is more than we've ever gotten. And it's really changed the way Ingles looks at the fire department, from the people I've talked to.
Go ahead, thank you. The hundred ninety thousand, which you just said we never got before through mutual aid, that that's where my issue comes in with everything is. That was money that we didn't have before, and we all knew this fire territory was come, we all knew it was come. A year from now, two years from now, it was come, I mean, it was a two-year process, so we should have had the forethought. To take that money, including Fall Creek and and Green Township money, and we should have put it in a separate fund. To be used for when the fire territory began, so we would have the operating budget. That money wasn't, it was put into the general fund, now, through my ignorance, I didn't know that that's where the money was gonna go. So that's why we created the non-reverting restricted fund for the fire territory, and now, which was in July.
August.
And and now being told the future funds aren't gonna go into that, but why did we create an ordinance? Cause it says in the ordinance that the the all future monies will go into the fund. So at least we could get the next five months worth into this, into the restricted fund. But, but I've been, is that, am I correct or not, that this money's still gonna go into the general fund? No.
So.
The ordinance does say that. The ordinance will be in full effect, the passage of it was always intended to include those funds described that are, that are received by the town of Pendleton in twenty twenty two. So that money has to go into this restricted fund, it can't go into the general fund anymore. So I just feel like we were all new to this, this fire territory is new to it for everybody, and we have an obligation. To make sure it succeeds, because we've got a lot of people counting on us, so that's what brought me up to, to, to ask for this money to be replaced. I, I don't, I understand everybody's personal opinion on all this, I get it, and I understand the finances of the town. The, the two hundred and thirteen thousand dollar shortfall is new, is new information. I didn't see a two hundred and thirteen thousand dollar shortfall, but I could have just missed it. But, and then we talk about reserve cash, where is the reserve cash fund, and how's it fuck?
The reserve cash is just what's left in the general fund, and it's here that maybe is not used.
Okay.
So. The whole two fifty two fund, it's just like the impact fee fund, you set it up, we set, my understanding was it, set it up so I have a fund. Starting January first, for those funds to start going into, whether it was permanent or. Eighty seven thousand dollars in lit money that was going across, whether it's the fifteen thousand dollars a month that was going across from Ingles. Any of the C bet, any of some of the F I tax, that's what I thought was going, that's why that fund was set up and was going to start on one one. And that was to receive those months, I, you know, to do that in December and get everything set up and get the line item budgets or preparation lines in there. Because two fifty two is, yes, it's, it's like general fund one oh one. Well, one oh one has five departments underneath it and probably a hundred categories underneath it, I, I needed it set up. So we have something, so I don't have to do it at the last minute. Never did I realize, and I didn't. Never did I realize, and I didn't realize on your, um, revenue that you had intended to decide. But honestly, no one ever asked either. I mean, that's where, that's where it's always gone. And I, I can't help it that I used it in our general fund for twenty twenty two, the fund twenty twenty two budget.
I, I am not blaming anybody for where the money went. I'll be the first one to say it was my ignorance of thinking that that was going to be set aside. I'll, I'll, I'll be the first to say that. But. Now that we all know this, we gotta make sure that the fire territory is fully funded for twenty twenty three.
I, I'm just looking back our past Google Drive here, I'm going back to December of twenty one. That's the first notice that we have, uh. The, uh. Lease agreement between the town of Ingles. That's what was brought in front of us is our December meeting. Which that meeting was crazy because you had salary ordinances that we got to you at the very last minute, which was way too late. It was done in December. That was done in December, December. Budget was, but I'm looking here at our modified December night. Is when the town of Ingles lease agreement. I think we have, we, did we do, because I didn't see anything in September, so I was just trying to go back through here.
I thought that that, that, that contract that we saw in December of twenty one, I thought that had to do with the remodel. And like in having our people at their station as well. I thought that was, I don't think that that was necessarily the payment situation.
I agree with name this year.
For twenty twenty two. Chris, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
That that, that December of twenty one contract that you're seeing. I thought had to do with the remodel of the Ingles station and like the whole like lease for a dollar thing. Not so much them paying us for fire service.
The fire service, the fire service contract, which I have in front of me was signed May of twenty twenty one.
I was going through it real quick.
Just our fire protection immediately and all the way through twenty twenty two.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
With the, uh, additional preparations in twenty twenty one, what was the total amount of? What is it budget for this year?
Okay, so total amount, that was the additional appropriation was fifty thousand. So like I said, it was fifty thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars was the additional appropriation.
What, what was the total preparation to the twenty one? I just, I think we need to see what the, what the. Think I can get it off of my, my computer.
What, okay, so what are you asking me about twenty twenty one, the total?
Yeah, about this.
Four twenty nine, three seventy.
Okay, then what, what is it now?
Two is. Four hundred thirty eight.
This is a tough one for, definitely for the fire territory coming up and obviously for our council as well. We have to be fiscally responsible. I understand your argument, Chris, as well, Steve, where you're coming from on this. If I look to the port treasurer's office as far as the financial solvency of the town, it may have to be. Hard for us. Uh, that's kind of, now I think we disagree with that. So I think we probably have some misunderstanding of that, not, you know. Onto this, it's new. Territory going forward. I, I, I guess I, probably am I wrong? The, uh, novel member I still was, I'm on a bill. So, uh, a part, participant with that, I guess I had the thought process. You won't get a tax draw till probably July of next year, then you would get for half the year. Thinking that money going forward, ambulance money, funds coming in. You would probably not be hiring full-time people until probably July. And you would maintain the status quo until that point in time, based on funds available. I'm probably wrong with that, but that was kind of my thinking without further discussion on that. But my concern on this is I think we're, anyway, we're a bit premature. I'd rather we were having this conversation in December of this year, so we kind of see where we are at the end of the year. Additional expenses coming in, are we, we, I mean, we, we have to be financially solid in this town. Who wants you to be financially solid, but you haven't started operation yet. It's coming up as we obviously know. I'd rather with the, uh, table this for now, wait till December. And have a meeting, see where we are financially and, uh, understand or issue about restricted funds. But the funds have been spent and I cannot support that we put the talent possibly in jeopardy financially going forward. For this year and for next year.
So, so going for that in December, how does that work? Because the town. Fire department ceases December thirty first, so. Going forward, January one, how does all that work legally or transfer money or whatever?
Would transfer the money in December into the restricted fund, it would carry over in the.
Okay.
Cause it, that's the way. So the next five months of the contract with Ingles is not going into the restricted fund?
I can see where you have a discussion, Paul, that issue for the next five months.
Can I sum up what I think you're saying? So actually it'll be, you'll only be reconciled with November. A chance for by the end of December.
For December fifteenth, so it has to be into.
So on December, before December fifteenth, you'll know where it's going to go. What how, what the financial situation is. In other words, if you've got some costs that are surprisingly high for some reason. Then, but you're know, you're going to know.
I'm going to have, if I get this fire truck, I'm, it's going to be a huge cost.
So.
And I know, I know right now talking with the grant writer because we're already paying for.
Okay, so let's, let's, yeah, let's, let's, let's put that variable in here at the last. So what Bob is saying, I want to make sure I understand what you're saying. We'll see what we look like at December, understanding we're going to have a month yet of expenses. December, to know what those are, but we'll have a pretty good idea. So.
I think we'd be in a better position at that point than we are right now.
Yeah, so, cause we may have, who knows, fifty thousand. Just, just.
Yeah, yeah, four months of, I can see a conversation on, you know, who, what they're saying we have now. Uh, I can see where we could entertain the fifteen thousand running off a month coming in now angles and maybe going forward. You, if we can afford that, you separate that out, put it in the restricted fund. So that would amount to, what, the sixty thousand? If you could entertain that.
And also everybody has to remember that there's money coming in from, uh, Fall Creek and Green Township. And the ambulance service that will, that will on December thirty first, no longer, on January first, no longer be there. So there's money coming in, so I, I, we have to, I have to know for sure, guarantee that this money is going into the restricted fund, not the general. That's why I wanted to get the restricted fund set up. Because that's basically the operating budget for twenty twenty three till we get a first draw.
If I could just offer something, I feel like there's, we're not going to sort this out in the next. I mean, we could sit here until midnight. I could stand here in this monorail like until midnight and we could talk about it. But I don't think we're going to get anywhere until we really like look at some numbers specifically. And until we look at the, like, what the fire territory absolutely needs. What we need from the town, like, I, I don't feel equipped to make a decision on this, this second, like in the next two hours. I don't feel like I have. The information necessary. I think we need to continue the conversation. Um, obviously, the town, I want to reiterate that we have an obligation to set up this territory. And have it function the way that it's meant to from the jump. We can't have them limping in, trying to make. You know, this thing's successful when they're limited on staff or they're limited on resources at all. However, we also have to be mindful of the town's financial situation going into the last quarter of the year. And I think that if we really dig in and look at the numbers we have. The appropriation reports for the entire town, if we kind of judge a, an educated guess of what's going to happen. I mean, there's always going to be outliers that surprise us, but like. Right this second, the information that I have, I'm not equipped to make a decision. Either way, I think that we need to look at it, I think we need to dig in. And I think that we can't wait until December to make this decision for the fire department, like for the fire territory. They need to know sooner than later. And I understand that when I say that, I don't mean tonight, but I mean in the next. Two weeks, three weeks that we get some form of resolution figured out. So that they understand what's going on, or at least a baseline of listen. We can, we feel comfortable making this much of an appropriation at this point. And then if it's more later, great. If it's not anymore, at least they got what they knew they were going to get. Like this, like streaming them along until December, I think is not going to be a good situation for the town or for the fire territory.
One thing I, I asked the council, please review ordinance twenty two thirty two with the non-reverting restricted fund. It may need, that, that needs to be amended. Uh, as it stands today, the amounts, uh, that come into the town this year. From those territories should go into the restricted fund. And as it stands right now, it can only be used for operations twenty twenty three and beyond. So that if. If that needs to be changed where it could be used for twenty twenty two operations, maybe that's, maybe that's a fix. Um, if you change that, then the money could go in there, it could still be used for general purposes of the town this year, but is the way we drafted it. I drafted it, um, it, it can only be used for next year's fire protection. So. You guys made the ordinance, you guys can.
Let's state more of a council.
I'm, I'm not understanding what Jeff, like you're saying that you would re amend the twenty twenty two. Resolution to say that you could receive the funds and spend out of it?
Yes.
I don't have any way of doing that with DLGF, that, that fund, I mean, but how would I, there's not even. Fund two fifty two in for twenty twenty two. That just came in, you, do you understand what I mean?
Well, I, I know it was created this year, so you're saying the fund itself doesn't exist until twenty twenty three?
Yeah, I'm saying to spend out of it.
I mean, that's perfect, that's perfect in my mind, because I wanted the fund. As this money came in, not to be able to be used and to be started to be used in twenty twenty three. We don't need the money in twenty.
Karen, you're saying the money can't go in there either.
That's what, I mean, pretty much, that's what's, I don't know if it can't go in there. I'm just saying what Todd had told me that it can't be spent, that it's.
Todd said it, until it's established in January the first, we can't do that, but. You know, if we could do it, you know.
Isn't the territory already established by state statute? It's just not in operation.
Right, it's a. Yeah, and I, Paige and I ran the, we, we talked about this, I, I, I was under the impression if we created this now, we could receive funds now. And Willie on this.
Because she used to work for the DOGF and I do rely on her a lot for information, so that's our first order of business.
Okay.
Was explained to me is like getting your liquor license, you get your liquor license today, but you're not allowed to sell liquor till January the first.
Okay.
And that's just the way it was explained to me.
Okay, well, that's the way it is, it's different than one I thought.
If, if you take this money and we're just expanding, I think you even said Green Township and. And Fall Creek Township and you put that into the restricted fund. How do you, how do you pay, how do you, how do you take care of the fire department the next four months? Cause you're not got, you don't have any money.
That's the hundred and ninety thousand dollars from.
No, no, you're missing my point. You take that hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And whatever Green Township, which doesn't pay anything, or non-concern, I'm, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say that. And then Fall Creek Township. That money's going into restricted fund for twenty twenty three. What is the town of Pendleton supposed to pay to the fire department to keep you running? Where do we get the money to do that?
Well, right, right now I am on track with my budget for twenty twenty two. I don't, I don't need any more money for twenty twenty two. That's the whole point. My budget is set. Last month or last meeting we had, the twenty nine thousand five hundred was inadvertently left off of my initial budget from that. The hundred and ninety thousand dollars is going forward from January one twenty three and beyond. For this year, I'm not requesting any more money. It's just the money that was initially supposed to be set aside. For fire protection going twenty twenty three and beyond, that's what I'm concerned about. My budget was raised and approved when I submitted it in August. And this didn't start till September, and to me, that money is just, was just there. What, what got this started was is the hundred and ninety thousand dollars is we need to be able to use January one. To pay for salaries, wages, insurance, so on and so forth. That's where it started coming up, because if not. We're going to be a shortfall of about fifty thousand dollars. We're going to figure out how to take a loan out.
Jeff, what you're, what you're saying is how, if you take this, their, their contract money and take it out of there, how was I going to fund them? For twenty twenty, what, where's that money going to come from?
For the rest of the year.
For the whole year, for the whole year. You take the two hundred and seventy five thousand out in fire protection. Your budget was, is four hundred and some thousand dollars. Where was I supposed to come up with this money if I wasn't using part of your fire contract?
The contract wasn't even in existence then.
No, no, what you're saying currently, at least I'm saying.
Right, for twenty two, when I submitted my budget, an increase of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for compensation, because that's the only line item that I increased. Twenty nine thousand five hundred got left off of that.
Right.
When it was approved and said back, here's your budget, that's fine. That was in August. Well, then September, the contract starts, that money, that hundred and ninety thousand dollars is nowhere in there. Cause I didn't even know we were going to get it. So how can the hundred and ninety thousand dollars be used in my budget when it was signed after my budget was approved? That's where I'm.
Hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Include in, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in your budget, that includes the twenty nine thousand, not a hundred and seventy nine thousand, correct?
Correct, correct, yeah.
So currently at the end of. August. You ought to be at, in, in your total budget, you're thirty five point three two percent. Through August, to be in, within your budget, everything should be thirty three point three percent. Or above. Your compensation, fire compensation, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is at fifty five point two five percent. Now, how is she or us supposed to know for the next four months? Are you going to spend all that hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Absolutely, because I, I have two more pays.
Do what?
I have two more pay cycles that have to come out of that. Thank you. I, I, I pay quarterly out of that. So, so I'll still have another pay in December. In December's pay.
So there's one more pay.
There's one more pay and then December's pay will be two, because I have to exhaust it before December thirty first, so I have two more pays. I, I still have for August, let's see. So October, November and December to pay. So I have three months to come out of that, but in December. The way it's always been in the past is the December pay, because we get paid in December. That December, January or December first to the thirty first goes on the next year's quarter. It's the way it's always been. This year, the December pay gets established and then we have to pay again. For the runs that are accumulated from December thirteenth, first to the thirty first of December of this year, so that's why there's still two pays left out of that money. Because if, because of that, I don't know how I'm gonna pay the guys for the whole month of December. My budget roughly is about thirty-eight thousand dollars every time we pay.
I'm saying you're within your budget. You're within your budget.
Absolutely, I'm, I'm within my budget, but the hundred and ninety thousand dollars starts January one, and that's what we need, because I'm not getting any. I'm sorry?
Where is the town? To get the money, pay your draw, if we start taking that money.
It was already established, the hundred and fifty thousand dollars is already there.
What he's saying is we approve the budget. And then the next month is when they did the contract, so the budget was approved for their funds. The following month is when we do the contract for the hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So, so the budget's already been approved. But then the next month, we got an extra hundred and ninety thousand dollars for fire protection, for an inventory.
Fire name is that, I, I mean, I'm not trying to.
You knew it was coming, I used that hundred and nine thousand.
I, I just, I'm just.
Because that is approved in May, I knew it was coming, that's why instead of ninety-one thousand on this fire compensation, it went up to a hundred and fifty thousand for this year.
What was approved, I don't know, what was approved in May?
The contract was signed in May of twenty twenty.
Okay, for the fire and EMS protection.
Yes.
Okay. A lot of dates I can't remember.
When I did twenty twenty-two budget and that had written ninety along with breath and breaks. Came up to two hundred and seventy-five thousand in this one for the general.
Let me throw out a mail on this, we could probably argue this point all night long, we're probably all right. It makes sense to me that we're not gonna get this resolved tonight, and I'm too likely to this point. I would suggest that maybe we set up a meeting, council president, obviously, Steve, you is the president of the territorial board. Billy, Jeff, have a private meeting, for lack of better words, to discuss this, get some of the questions answered. Maybe some additional information from the state on what we can do with the D O G F, and come back to us on a later date. I don't want to vote on this tonight, I don't want to vote, I don't want to jump back to town finances, my Karen saying, Willie saying. I would have to vote no, this one, I have to vote on this because of the, the risks from the town, I don't want to do that, want the territory to be successful. But I hate to vote on that seating without some of these questions being resolved, and I don't see how we're gonna get resolved here tonight. Rest of the council, how do you feel about what Bob just said?
That's exactly how I feel, like, I'm not gonna get anything, I, I am not comfortable to vote on anything about this today.
I think we need some more answers from the state. All along with this fire territory, I've set up. Tens of meetings to make sure everybody's on the same page, and obviously, this is another one where we could have. The other thing is, okay, let's just say hypothetically, this doesn't go through. Next year, where are we gonna get the funds to? We're gonna have to cover the. Fire service for the first six months, correct?
Correct.
Till that money, July first, the majority of the money is there, it is budgeted, and then, and it was shown on the fire territory's budget. But that hundred and ninety thousand was part of that, so. So right now, the, the orders we have, we did last month, nothing's been done with it, because we don't know if it's. Per state's legal, correct? For the D O G F, the two fifty-two?
I didn't even know that was questioned.
Well, no, no, that was. Because I know we set it up last month to put all that money in there going forward. That was my understanding. We voted on, that's what, we, we approved it last month, that's what we did, we approved that two fifty-two account going forward, all that money coming in for fire. Protection is gonna go to that account.
That language is in that resolution or.
It's in that ordinance, twenty-two thirty-two, it's in there.
Oh, we need to clarify the legality of that, I may have written illegal words, don't care to be something, willing to do something illegal.
That's why I propose that we just table this for now, I don't want to vote on this tonight. And have the, you folks have a, have a private meeting, for lack of better words, come back with recommendation to us so we can entertain.
Well, this does, this did require a ten-day notice in the paper, so I, I would recommend that we're like. I think that's some shit at this, at this point of time, it is, to set a date and time to meet rather than pre-notice the thing.
Okay, let's, let's, we're gonna table this.
Continuum to this meeting. Why ten days? Because this is technically a public hearing.
It's what?
Any, any appropriation due funds are called a public hearing.
Alright, so. So this meeting will continue at a later day, that way you still use the ten-day notice.
Okay, okay. Everybody agreed, let it go, table it now.
We just need a date that you guys are gonna come back.
Yep.
So you could provide the ten-day notice.
No, you don't need to.
You don't need it, no.
This one, and you're continuing.
So we just need to decide before we adjourn tonight, what, what date and time that would be. We can get at least three of your present here. I don't know where the rest will be that night, but I'm sure it'll be somewhere.
I will be back home, I promise. I'm ready to go home, it's raining.
Uh, would you, September the twenty-seventh, which is a Tuesday. I'm just, I'm just looking at the calendar.
Are you good, Marissa, on the twenty-seventh, Tuesday?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, I am.
September the twenty-seventh is when we'll be. Continue this meeting and. Right here. Alright, Jeff.
It works for me.
Meeting is.
You want refreshments now, am I on the refreshment committee?
Meeting in eight hundred south and eight hundred west is pretty heated.
Okay, bye Karen.